I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Burton.
Here.
Almond.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Alanese.
Here.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes. I would like to make an announcement at this particular time. I'm going to step down as mayor. I'm going to stay on the council. But my heart doctor told me that I've got to get my blood pressure under control and I cannot do it with this position. And so consequently, I'm going to turn the meeting over to my vice mayor and he will run the meeting and we're going to appoint a new one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll all have time to thank you for the services as well. First line of business for me is to request an amendment to the agenda so that we can add nominations for the mayor to our agenda. And let's take a roll call vote on that. Oh, do I have a second?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
And roll call.
Do we need to explain why we're doing this? I mean, it's subsequent to the -- there's no knowledge of it, so.
Right. So this announcement of the mayor to step down is something new that was not included in our agenda. The city council can only take action on items that are on the posted agenda. However, when something new comes up and it wasn't possible to get it on the agenda, there's a process for amending the agenda. It takes a four-fifths vote of the city council. That's the situation that we are in. And so in order to take nominations for a successor mayor, we need to amend the agenda to do that. So we have a motion and we have a second. And we should call for a public comment on the motion to amend the agenda. And if there is none, then we'll proceed with a roll call vote to amend the agenda. So I think now would be a good time to ask for public comment. Great. We have a first and a second. Do we have any public comments? Anybody who'd like to comment on our motion to simply add this item to the agenda? Okay. Not seeing any public comment. I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Almond.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alanese.
Hi.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
All right. So now this is on our agenda. And what I would like to do at this time is to ask for nominations for the mayorship. And at that time, I'm going to make a nomination myself. I would like to nominate my fellow councilman, Tom Almond, for the mayorship. And do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. We have a first and a second. It's now time for public comment, yes? Okay. So is there anybody, member from the public, who'd like to public comment on the first and second item of our nomination? Okay. Not hearing any. I believe it's time for a vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Almond.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Alanese.
Hi.
And then.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. In that case, we have some switcheroo's.
Yeah, that's part of the meeting.
You need to get the gavel. It's okay, Tom Almond.
Larry.
Well, thank you. Obviously, your medical is kind of important to us. All right. Good evening. Thank you for your trust. This isn't certainly part of my plans, but the city right now is very important to me and I'm honored by the unanimous support of this. Larry, we're very appreciative of you and concerned about your medical and you're my neighbor, so we want you to live a long, long, and longer happy life.
Thank you.
So thank you for what you've done and your family has done. So for those of you who don't know, Larry's been on the city council, his wife's been on the city council, and his son's been on the city council. So the Stranskys have made their mark on the City of Willets.
Served with all of them.
Served with all of them. And they served with you. I'm sure they can talk about that, Bruce. All right. We're going to move on. Doris.
The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you are interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum while the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders imfeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect. Will not be tolerated and the individual will be removed immediately. Public matters. The first item is discussion impossible approval of an at-will employment agreement with Laco Associates for interim city manager services at a weekly rate of $3,600 and authorize the mayor to execute same. The presenting staff member is city attorney Jim Lance.
Did you ask for comments of public comment? No. You read it, and I don't think you.
No, we just get right past that.
I'm sorry. For any matters that are not on the agenda. Is there any -- is there a public comment for any matters that are not on the agenda? By all means, just take the podium. There you go. Come on up. Come on up. Right there. Thank you and welcome. State your name.
My name is Eli Champion, and I work with the Skunk Train. And we were hoping, our goal is to get a little more resources and/or just basically resources to get more festive looks for the streets, like decoration stuff for Christmas particularly and Halloween. So that's what, you know, the Skunk Train brings in a lot of people for Christmas and stuff like that. So our goal is to kind of get more people to stay a little bit longer. And so that's kind of the main goal here. So that's why I'm here. And also a personal reason is the skate park. I'm a fan of skateboarding. I've skateboarded my whole life. We would, it would be really cool to see lights at the skate park. That's like outdoor lights so that we could get, you know, a little more hours in, like during the summer and stuff like that. So those are the two reasons I was coming here.
Right. And on matters that are not on the agenda, we can't really respond to, but both those are good ideas and thank you for being here, Eli.
Yeah, thank you.
Suprema.
I'm here to share with you a couple of documents and some concerns that I have. In a prior committee meeting for the finance department, during my time to speak, I was cut short with what I understood to be a request that I submit any questions I have in advance in writing. I reached out to the city clerk afterwards, the next day, knowing that there was a transportation meeting coming up, and asking what would be the process. Am I supposed to submit in writing? What was the process? I received no response. On Thursday, showed up for the transportation committee meeting. There was no notice of cancellation. There was no sign on the door. So I reached out again when I received a notice on April the 11th that there was an agenda packet for the finance committee meeting. I have a copy of the document here. In that letter, I asked what the process would be for questions because as I understood it, I needed to submit them in advance. I reached out to the clerk and I have a copy of each of my correspondence as to her and received a response stating that, you know, that that wasn't the -- it goes on through the document. And I'm happy to supply two copies to you and anybody else who'd like a copy of it. But what really disturbed me is if you look at the last two pages of the document, the city clerk forwarded it in a response to me, she said, "See attached." And it was a letter from Vice Mayor Alanese, a lengthy, full-page letter that was, to say the least, unfriendly and inappropriate, extremely inappropriate. My response to him after receiving this full-page letter was, "Mr. Alanese, your response with me, your correspondence with me is extremely inappropriate," for which he wrote back another half-page document. My response again, "Your action of reaching out to me unsolicited to retaliate against me is not appropriate. Do not write me unless a request is made of you. Your email demonstrates a misunderstanding by you and your authority over citizens of the community," to which he responded, "Okay, thank you then." Now I have a copy of all of the documents right here. I'm happy to leave a copy with the clerk. But if I needed clarification on a matter, the clerk had every opportunity to respond, which she did, and we didn't have a negative exchange. And it was extremely inappropriate of Vice Mayor Alanese to reach out to me and send me these emails, and I don't appreciate them and I expect not to receive something outside. When you're up here on the council, this is where you have the authority to address the public. You don't have the right to reach out to us individually and admonish us or say any negative things about us. This is where, this is where your authority lies, when you sit up there as the five of you making decisions. I'll leave a copy of these here.
Thank you. Anybody else on matters that are not on the agenda? All right, moving on. All right. I apologize, Marge.
So Madge Strong. I'm just wanting to make an announcement about WELL, which is Willets Economic Localization. We're a local nonprofit. We've been around for 21 years and we try to not only educate but also take action to make Willets as sustainable and environmentally friendly and healthy as we can economically and environmentally. And so I just wanted to mention, if anyone here is interested in joining WELL, I have a couple of forums and we have a couple of things coming up. Next Monday is the deadline for our next newsletter, which will be for May and June. If you have items that are of interest to everybody, that you'd like us to include in our WELL newsletter, get them to me before Monday or by Monday. And we have a forum that we're co-sponsoring with the library on energy, how to save money and save energy. And then we're going to have a series of forums co-sponsored with the library also on water and on wasting, you know, waste products, how to reduce our waste footprint as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madge. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? All right. Let's go to public matters A.
Discussion impossible approval of WELL employment agreement with Laco Associates for interim city manager services at a weekly rate of $3,600 and authorize the mayor to execute same. Presenting staff member Jim Lance, city attorney.
Thank you. On March 21, former city manager Brian Bender agreed to the terms of a separation agreement with the city council and he has stepped down and creating a vacancy in the office of city manager. And then subsequent to that, the city council in a closed session decided to select on an interim basis Rod Wilburn to be its interim city manager. Mr. Wilburn is seated here in the second row. Rod formerly was the city engineer and employee of the city between 2014 and 2016. He's a licensed civil engineer. In 2016, he left the city's employment and joined the engineering and surveying firm Laco Associates, who I believe have been operating in Mendocino County since the 1950s. Is that right, Rod?
Started in Humboldt County.
Humboldt County.
Yeah.
But it's about 1950?
Yeah.
And also have offices in Mendocino County.
Correct.
So the city reached out to Rod and told him that he would like to have him serve on that interim basis. The parties agreed to the terms of an agreement. The agreement is part of the agenda packet. It's called an at-will employment agreement. And the agreement is with Laco because Rod remains their board chair and a principal employee of Laco. For Rod to work at the city as the city's appointed interim manager, it will require Laco's agreement. And Laco will assign Rod approximately 24 hours a week for a term up to six months to serve as the interim manager. And Mr. Wilburn will be the exclusive employee of Laco who will perform those services. As I mentioned, the agreement is part of the packet. I don't know if we have any other, any other questions about this?
I think, no, not a question, but just fill in a little detail that maybe everybody already knows, but I think it's important to note that Rod is a local individual, born and raised here in Willets and family here. He is also, I think the reason, you might not brought this up, is you're a little shaky and maybe concerned, but Rod just finished law school, too. So I'm really, I'm really pleased that we have a local person that is so eminently qualified to do this with history with the Willets, history with the team that we have here and has the longstanding high regard for integrity in the community. And I think it's just what we need.
Yeah, I was aware of that. Rod did attend Empire Law School, School of Law in Santa Rosa, I believe, as an evening class student, working full-time here in Willets and then in the evenings driving out of Santa Rosa for, I think, probably a four-year program and graduated from that earned his Juris Doctor degree. And yeah, so maybe one of these days, you know, Rod will have to sit down and you can step up here. Anyway.
So the public knows this and the biggest concern that arrives on my doorstep is conflict of interest because we use Laco and we've used Laco. We currently have two contracts, I think, coming to an end with Laco. And he's a principal with Laco, so the conflict of interest. So please, let's discuss this.
Okay. That is a big concern. And the city engages local contractors, local engineering firms to perform engineering services for the city on a contract basis. And Laco is one of those firms. There are a handful of other local firms who do the same thing. And so there's a concern that if Mr. Wilburn is performing interim city manager services, he'll have some kind of inside information about what the engineering needs might be and could his company, Laco, have an unfair advantage with other firms? And so we have addressed that in a paragraph. It's paragraph three, three D of the agreement. And if you don't mind, I'll just read that paragraph. It provides, "Wilburn shall not engage in any activity with Laco or otherwise which is or may become a conflict of interest, prohibited contractor, which may create an incompatibility of office as the city's interim city manager. Laco will cause Wilburn, Laco will cause Wilburn to complete all disclosure forms required by law. Further, during the term of this agreement and for a period of at least six months following the term, both Laco and Wilburn will not directly or indirectly bid on, participate in, or solicit any business from the city, its agencies or representatives in connection with any contract awarded or to be awarded by the city. This includes but is not limited to (a) bidding on or participating in public works projects including contracts to provide the city with engineering, surveying, project management, or other professional services; (b) consulting with any entity bidding on or participating in city projects; and (c) working for any entity that is a bidder or contractor for the city." So not only during his engagement as interim city manager, but for a six-month period thereafter, neither he nor Laco will be bidding on city contracts.
And so what about those two contracts that we have that are coming to an end with Laco? I mean, those are in the books and maybe I should look at our public works.
I'm going to have to look into that, see, I'm going to have to talk to city attorney Lance about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have not.
I mean, if they're coming to an end, that's great. I mean, all the work's been done.
Yeah, but we do have another ongoing services contract with them, too. There's another one for grants and funding that they have to distribute.
I see.
That's ongoing one.
All right. Anybody else? Jared?
For Jim, just so you know that we discussed this during our negotiations and we brought this up with Jim, but Jim, this sort of agreement, these exclusions that you named off, it's fairly common. Is that correct?
That's right.
I mean, we were concerned and that's why this was written in so that everybody understands. We brought it up. Rod understood. Jim said this is a fairly common in these sort of things and it's not something that we're just throwing in, just to, it's something that's out there.
And then we install whatever firewall was necessary for the existing contracts that there is a non.
Okay.
Inaction upon issues of the existing contracts.
Oh, other than, I'm sure that Mr. Wilburn knows the law, we just discussed, and he's sort of not going to do anything willingly or unwittingly or wittingly to undermine his own actions or his actions of the city. So I'm confident in those actions.
Jared, you did?
Expectation was to close the contracts, even though one contract necessary.
Okay. All right. Public comment. Helen?
Tom, this is fine. I think as a matter of procedure, it's good to do, get, ask for comments from the council prior to.
We did. I did ask everybody.
Oh. Thank you.
You were the first one.
Well, I thought I just spoke.
Okay, well, so do you have more comments?
I didn't ask for, I didn't wait for anybody to ask.
Do you have anything more to?
No.
Okay.
Helen Sims. Under section D that you just talked about, who or what kind of an entity will provide oversight for all of those things that can or cannot happen under this agreement?
I think we're looking at it right there.
Well, I, yeah, so every, any time that the city is in the process of soliciting bids for contracts, that's an issue that comes to my attention. It is on an agenda for the city to take action on. And so everybody is aware of this potential issue. And if we saw that Laco was bidding on a contract, contrary to the terms of Mr. Wilburn's agreement, we would all be aware of that and they would be disqualified. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be permitted to bid on a contract.
So is we.
Right, right.
Yes. And there would be no sole source, sole sourcing, you know, to Laco or things like that? No, of course not. Okay. Anybody else have a comment? Madge?
I just want to say that during, when I was on city council and Rod was the chief engineer here, he was very, very competent, articulate. He helped explain things that were otherwise way over my head. I think he would do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't have any objections to Rod. Rod's a stand-up guy. This is, this has nothing to do with the individual. It's just questions that I have. I wanted to express concern about the process in which we came, this item came before us, the transition plan. The public would have liked, and I know I would have liked to have seen a transition plan. From the time that the city manager left, we had another meeting. It would have been nice for the public to get some understanding of what the vision was because we really didn't know until we saw the agenda packet this evening what the vision was. And so that's a little concerning. Beyond the process, I have some fiscal concerns. The proposal would appoint Laco Associates board chair to serve as a city manager at the cost that you stated of $3,600 per week for just 24 hours of work. I did a little bit of math because.
Suprema, can you speak up some people?
Sure. Sorry. I did a little bit of, a little bit of math because I was like, $3,600 a week, what does that come out to be? Well, for 24 hours of work, so that translates to about 100, if this was an annual salary, it would translate to $187,000 a year. If we were to extrapolate that rate to a full-time role of what a normal city manager would have worked, we'd be looking at nearly a $400,000 annual salary. That's a staggering figure, especially when compared to the typical salaries of full-time city managers across the state. Placing the full city manager, secondly, placing the full city manager authority into the hands of a private engineering consultant, even temporarily, does raise red flags. What boundaries will exist between their role as a public servant and their role as a private firm, which you address some of those? I had heard somebody say, because this was a question of mine, and the answer I'm thinking in my head is that he'll govern essentially what the, he'll decide what's a conflict of interest himself. I've served up there. I understand that there are some other factors and I understand, he's a very reputable person. So to be honest, I don't have a lot of concern in that, but it is, it is outside of what the norm would be. This appointment risks setting a dangerous precedent of how we govern and how much we're willing to pay for it. I respectfully urge the council to slow down, seek more public input, and evaluate both the cost and the consequences of this decision. And then I didn't quite get enough clarity on the two contracts that you were referring to that were outstanding. Would those payments still go through? How much time is left on those? And could we get some more information before you make a decision tonight, even if it meant a break or whatnot, so that we're fully informed on what's left on the contracts?
Thank you. And to respond to your first part, with all due respect, your numbers are not correct of being more expensive. This is a non-benefited job. And if you look at the former city manager, it was much more with you included, his benefits than what this is.
So the former city manager was making more than the $400,000 with benefits?
I didn't say that. You're putting words in my mouth. Thank you very much.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking.
Let me repeat myself. The former city manager had benefits, a benefit package, which is a weighted salary and it actually equated to close to $230 an hour, just to let you know. I think that you were on the council when you approved it. And so this is around $150 an hour without benefits, so it's less than what the former city manager was getting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair.
Anybody else? Public comment on city manager? So we have a motion in front of us. We will have a motion.
I'll be proud to make it.
I'll second.
Okay, and the motion is?
Staff recommendation that we engage Laco Associates for an interim city manager, being Rod Wilburn. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I second.
For the terms and things that's applied in the agenda.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Stransky.
Yes.
Alanese.
Hi.
Mayor Al.
Hi.
And we're sitting in the audience.
So, Sabrina, I also want to know the answers to the questions, and you and I both get the answers, because he just said during a discussion that, Wilber said that we're going to, he's gonna research it. So when I get the information, you'll get the information. And the next council meeting, we'll discuss those two. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
The Little Lake Fire District is not able to attend tonight. He did send over a report, and I will distribute that to your emails and then have it on the website.
Okay. Thank you.
Third district county supervisor, John Hascheck.
Hey, John.
Monthly update.
Well, good evening, Mayor Almane, the council, new city manager, and attorney, city attorney. So, thank you. You know, it's difficult times we're in, but you guys are stepping up, so appreciate that. We had the board of supervisor meeting at the Wanacott Room in the museum on April 8th, and it was overflowing capacity in the Wanacott Room. People were very much into the overflow of the museum. And so that showed that there was a lot of interest in what we were doing. And certainly, one of the issues was Prop 172 money, which is state sales tax for public safety. And the fire departments felt like there was a miscalculation, and so we revised that calculation. So all the fire departments in Mendocino County will be getting a little bit more because of that new way we're calculating it. You know, we had this brick grant, which is a building resilient infrastructure in communities grant. We've been working on it for several years, and it's through FEMA. And it was for the Brook Trail Sherwood Road area, also for the City of Willets Airport, and maybe some other structures that the City of Willets had. And so we were going along. It was in different phases. We got the first phase, which was $3.6 million to start the planning for the whole project. The entire project was $50 million to, you know, do this fuel abatement, vegetation management, home hardening, defensible space for all of those, for houses, landscape, and also for, you know, the airport. And the staff told me, you know, last week that on the FEMA website, they had disbanded the whole brick program because of what they called waste and ineffective. You know? And so that is nationwide. And it was just stopped in its tracks. And so the county has been working with other counties, such as Nap and Sonoma, who had brick grants pending. And they have more capacity to fight, but it doesn't look good. So I think our communities will be less safe and more at risk because of this. So just wanted to let you know. You know, the library roof was part of a project that was in three parts. One was the roof itself, one was the solar panels, and also battery backup, so that we could have a safe place to go to in case of emergencies, and, you know, warming center in the winter, and also, you know, cooling in the summer. If the energy goes out, then we'd have like four days backup from the solar panels and the battery system. Well, it turns out that there is a complication with the approach that the county was using, and so we're now at, we had a grant for this whole package, but we've had to separate it now. So we are going back to, we're going to put out an RFP, which is a request for proposals, to do just the roof right now, because we think it's critical that the roof be done this summer. We don't wanna go through another winter with the blue tarp on the libraries.
Thank you.
And the other parts we'll get to, you know, in the future. And so another aspect that was interesting yesterday at our board meeting was that the library people, staff, came forward with a proposal that they had an engineering architectural firm looking at redoing the Ukiah Library, and whether building a second floor, or rebuilding, or doing something very different. And the proposal was for $38 million. And that was, my point was, that's all, you know, looks great. It's a lot of money. And when Measure O money comes in at $2 million a year, that's a long time to pay off that, for that structure. And what's it do for the other libraries in our county? Because we're paying, you know, Measure O tax to, you know, for the building, the capital improvement of the libraries. And if it all goes to Ukiah, then nothing's gonna go to Willets, or Leightonville, or Cobal, you know, all those other places that still need help. So, so anyway, we're keeping an eye on that one. And we did not approve anything on that. We had, the direction was for library staff to come back and work with the CEO in figuring out something that's a little more sustainable. So those are kind of the key events of the county right now. If there's any questions?
How are you getting along with the state auditors?
Well, the state auditors were, we just had a conference with them last week, and they're going to start working like within the next week or two. So we're looking forward to that, actually.
Any questions for the chair there? No? Thank you.
I just wanted to, John, thanks for bringing the meeting here to the city. I think I heard a lot of positives. People felt that they had a chance to give their voice locally.
Well, people certainly had a lot of concerns. Yeah. It was nice to see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madge? Public comment? Sure.
There were two other three major items on that agenda on April 8th. One of them was cannabis. Basically, the conflict between the staff interpretation of the proposition that was passed by the public regarding limits on cannabis grows. And the board decided on a three-to-two vote to go with raising what amounts to raising the limit instead of 10,000 square feet per grow or per parcel to 20,000. I know that the wording of that is part of the dispute, but they did, on a three-to-two vote, raise the amount of growing area that parcels could be allowed. And there was a question, many questions about the fact that that was being done by a staff proposal that had never gone through the public process. But anyway, that was one. And then there was also a fairly good discussion about the $18 million roughly budget deficit that the county is showing for '25, '26 fiscal year. And I was really disappointed, 'cause I think John Hascheck raised a number of ideas for how could we kind of narrow that huge deficit down? And the other board members basically said, "Well, let's just ask the staff to not use any one-time funds and come back to us, showing us what a balanced budget would look like." And I'm going like, "That's an awful tall order to basically throw to the staff without giving them any direction about how to balance that budget." And it's gonna be pretty hard. They talked about things like hiring freezes and other stuff, but they didn't basically give direction. And I think that was disappointing to me. And I do appreciate John Hascheck's attempt to put forward some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, moving on.
We skipped a step after we voted on Rod.
Yes.
We did not give him the oath of office.
Can we do that now?
Yes, please.
Hi, Rod Wilburn. Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that I will, I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Once again.
Thank you.
Once again, congratulations, Rod.
Okay, then enactment of ordinances? We have none. The consent calendar is, the following items are recommended for approval or denial as follows. The city council minutes of April 9th.
Let's make a motion to approve the amendment. Second, public comment on the minutes from April 9th. Hearing none.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Hi.
Mayor Almane.
Hi. We're just Almane.
There are no monthly activity reports, commissions, agencies, and authorities. There are none. City manager reports and recommendations. Do you have anything that you wanna talk about?
Nothing specific, but I would just like to say that I'm honored to have this opportunity. I look forward to working with the city council, with the city team, and with the community. For how long I'm here, could be three months, six months, I'm not sure, but yes, this is my hometown, and it is important to me. I will assure you that there will be no conflict of interest. I'm here to be this interim city manager, not to be an engineer, nor to gain any unfair advantage. So the two contracts in question that were mentioned earlier, to the best of my understanding, we have zero work left to do on either one. So whatever, there will be no more additional charges beyond this point, and we have no intention of pursuing any opportunities with the city other than this one. This is what's most important to us. So, well, for full disclosure, we do have contracts for people within the community that I may have to recuse myself from any discussion related to certain projects that are being presented at the city. So I thank you all for the opportunity, and I look forward to...
Any public comments? Okay. Department recommendations. Presentation of audit conducted by Moss, Levy, and Hartzheim regarding audited financials report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 20.3. Presenting staff member is Manuel Orozco.
Thank you, Mayor Moss and members. Thank you. I have before you the, included in the agenda, the fiscal year audit report ending in June 30th, 20.3. In that, we have the general fund. The biggest changes in the general fund was it totaling $3.9 million, and that was the general fund and Measure K included together. For the transportation fund, which is designed for streets, it totaled at $2.4 million. Sewer enterprise fund was at $5.7 million, and the water enterprise fund was at $4.3. So at this point, we started utilizing fund balance and started on major projects around the city. Most notably is Bloxter Lane rehabilitation project. Rail trails started as at that point. Fuel island, bathroom, and fencing at the airport. We revamped the general plan, and that's when we were actively doing that. And the emergency tree falling on the rodeo grounds was also a big project that we undertook as well. Moving forward, we are, after this is all closed and settled out, and we're now moving towards moving our fund balances from the old ACS system software into the new Springbrook system software. So with that, we're right now vetting the alignment journal entry that is designed to align ACS with Springbrook. And then once that's complete, I'm sending it over to the auditor so that he can review it. And then I'm also gonna be sending it over to the Springbrook so that they can review it and then do the import. Once that happens, and hopefully it happens over this weekend, then we can start on our year-end items for the next fiscal year budget, which will be all the schedules, including fixed assets, bank reconciliations will need to be done, along with long-term debt, compensated expenses, and other schedules for the audit, so that we can get it done before the end of June 30th.
So can you give us a snapshot of the audit? Tell us...
So...
So, and when I'm talking about that, I appreciate the words you're using, but I didn't do that well in math. The purpose of an audit is to find out if we are in the red or in the black, and how healthy are we are. So can you give us that snapshot?
So at this point, we are still healthy, and we have basically...
That being the end of '23.
End of '23, yes. And so at that point, we had healthy balances and everything like that. So we had lots of projects in the horizon that we knew that we were going to pay for. And those were all in the docket for the next following year. And so, but we did have a healthy fund balance at that particular point in time, in both water, sewer, streets, and even... Even in the general fund, although I would sit there and say that the general fund was starting to wean a little close. Unfortunately, the audit right now kind of blends those two numbers together, but if we were to pull it apart, general fund had somewhere around like $300,000 left remaining in the budget, in its fund balance. Whereas the majority of the funding that it totals, the 3.9, that is in, that is in Measure K.
So here's the other question people have. This is the '22, '23 we're putting to bed, really.
Yes.
So '23, '24, and I know we're getting close to getting the end of it. When is that going to sunset?
So the plan is, and it's still my goal, to try and finish it by the end of May. So that's gonna be my goal. It may be that it takes a little time into June. It just depends upon timing within the auditors getting back to me, Springbrook getting back to me, us getting things through, having it uploaded into the system, so that then we can start. Once we have the ability to start, then we are going to go at it. For the most part, I'm hoping to do the year's worth of work in approximately three weeks. So that's the big push. So it'll be light nights.
Okay. Any surprises in this audit?
In this audit? This audit was a little bit difficult, because we had, there was a couple of things that were happening during the audit, so it caused some misalignments. But we, for the most part, the audit findings were the typical ones that we've been seeing because of how late these audits are going. Mostly, the year-end process was done far too late. The bank reconciliations were done far too late. And the newest one was more of a misalignment. At that particular point in time, we had kind of a too many cooks in the kitchen kind of thing, where entries were being done, where the schedules were already done, so the auditors received conflicting same data. So we had to clear that up and everything like that.
Thank you.
That presented a fine.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I'm trying to find page in Manuel, but... It looked to me like between, in here, it was around page 50-something. The unfunded pension liability jumped $2 million in that fiscal year. Are we gonna see that happen? That's a typical tough nut. Every public candidate is their pension debt. And as I understand it, that the, from my past history, the compers can...
can make a demand on you to fund that.
Very true.
And so I'm curious of what your explanation and what your outlook on our pension, being that it did show a $2 million bump.
Yeah. So the year prior, the pension fund actually received, I think it was a 23% increase or a 23% increase in the funding that they had that they expected to have, right? And so they had this boom of money that they had in place. Instead of my understanding of this, instead of using that to kind of draw down on the pension for future obligations, they went ahead and did other projects that were not related to pension items.
The PERS or the city?
PERS. So PERS did that. And then the next year, it came down as a negative 9% drop. So that drop hit harder because they had obligations set out in other venues. And I really don't want to go into most of the things because a lot of them seem kind of way beyond what I understood, and it seemed more political in nature than anything else. But the fact of the matter is, they had their money tied up, and then when they had experienced the loss, and that's when this happened, they offset and sent it out to us. They basically repackage that debt and hand it out to each individual city as their own actuarial allocation. And so the unfortunate truth is, yes, you're right. I mean, they had the ability to draw down and do less with, you know, have us pay less, but instead, there was some action that happened throughout, you know, some things I heard of was projects to Ukraine, a couple of other things, things that were not related to pension in California.
So so how much have we had to backfill pension obligations in this last 12 months or last 24 months?
So the backfill is it basically comes in with an annual cost, actively calculated out through payroll. And then there's the UAL, what you're talking about, the actual liability. And that one has increased slightly. The $2 million you've seen is the overall amount, but we still we still see the impact. It's just at the moment, I think it was we're still within our range of what we expected. And we get our actuarial increases at different particular at the end of this year. So we'll get our new one at the end of this year in June. And let me think here how this one goes. Once we get that, we'll find out exactly where they've landed, per se. And we haven't had any conversation about where PERS is at at the moment.
So you must, can I ask another question?
Sure.
I mean, obviously, we're talking about 2023, which is essentially two years ago now. I mean, June 30th of 2023, and we're almost, you know, closer to that. So I guess my concern is, is that how have revenues been trending this year?
Are personal sales tax revenues or the?
Well, sales tax revenue obviously is is a big one. But if we're down to $350,000 of non-committed funds in the general fund.
Yes, yes, somewhere on there.
That's at the end of 23.
That's the end of 23. That is concerned.
So and if revenues are off like in almost all of the business that I associate with and through my business contacts, there's a general 30% hit to everybody's gross revenue, I mean, everybody that I see. And that's if you're doing. So I mean, the last 24 months have not been kind to enterprise in general.
Yes.
And so I think for us to do a budget, a meaningful budget in 24, 25, 26, it's going to be imperative that we have numbers, or you may be writing checks in honey for a way to make.
Yeah. So what we did in the year after, so 23, 24, is we started going to Measure K more and utilizing Measure K more. And we made requests on backfill for a series of items that amounted to over $800,000, if I remember correctly.
What is the what is the, I mean, when did Measure K go into effect? I'm sorry, I haven't really been following the city for the last four years.
No, Measure K went into effect back in 2020. And that was it. And it took about a year to increase to start getting funding coming through. So it's been building up since 2021.
And it's a 10-year.
And it's a 10-year.
Tax, and it creates about how much money a year?
About $3 million, 3.3.
Really?
Yeah.
And is it earmarked money? Is it to be used for capital projects or?
No, 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 it's earmarked. Part of it is earmarked for public safety. Jerry knows a lot about it and everything like that, but part of it is about earmarked for public safety and other items for to be used. But there's a committee that's supposed to be able to approve those items. And so it's mostly for not necessarily backfill, but to try and the intent is to try and wean ourselves off of it eventually, and within the 10 years it was.
The idea was that we initially didn't dip into it because we wanted our Measure K committee in place, and then we wanted it spent on the item. Recreation is one of them, roads and some other things.
And police services too.
Yeah. It seemed like if you have a defined tax period, you'd want that to be for for nonrecurring expenses.
Yeah.
If you incorporate that into your into your overhead, your labor, and you're setting yourself up to fail in 10 years dramatically.
Well, a lot of the expenses that we've experienced are all one-time expenses. So there are a lot of like.
Springbrook?
Yeah, yeah, Springbrook, the West Menecino Project, North State, North Street, Blosser Lane, State Street, all these things that have sewer trunk and items. We don't, these are not reoccurring expenses that would be happening.
But you have the half-cent transportation sales tax money for.
We have that for that, too, yes. So we used up a lot of those and a lot of funding for water and sewer, along with Measure K if it is necessary. But for the most part, we didn't use up much too much in Measure K for those items.
And my, I guess my general concern or point is, is that 2023 has some fairly alarming concerns in it, and it is two years old. And I feel like at some point that genie's going to pop up out of the bottle, and we're going to have, I mean, I just look in at, you know, you just have to read the daily paper, cities that are on top of their financial obligations are not reporting anyway. The city of Santa Rosa is facing, what is it, $50 million deficit this year? So it is, we'd be unique if we were on the other side of that equation, and it doesn't sound like we are. So I'm concerned. And I think in even living up to our present obligations driving the nail further in our coffin. We don't really have anything to make it that understanding of.
Well, the new budget for 25, 26 is in being prepared now, and it's going to be in front of us next month. And certainly, we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah.
And so are we in a financial dire straits? No, but we are in a financial situation that the budget's going to be, we're going to use a sharpened pencil for our budget.
Yeah.
But ahead of Tom, my point is, is that the budget absent fund balance, accurate fund balance is is you have a balanced budget with with projected revenues, but.
I get it.
Yeah.
I get it.
You're not dealing with all the facts.
It sounds like a lot of these questions we have now about these wild swings, about the pension and the revenues and liabilities going up, we're going to have to have those same conversations again, hopefully in May or perhaps June, when we get to 23, 24.
Yes.
Because that will tell us even more whether those swings are still continuing, or they settle down a little bit more, and we'll probably be much closer to our budget. And so we'll have an idea of what we're planning for as far as our revenue is concerned.
Yeah.
Because we've seen the revenue go down for a while now. So clearly, we're not planning for more revenue in the future. We got to prepare for having less income. So it just sounds like a lot of these concerns are going to come right back at us. So just keep track of these things, because when we come back and talk about 23, 24, we're going to, it's the same question, the same concerns. We've got to make sure the revenue is matching what's actual, and the liabilities don't stop going way up.
The plan is, though, too, is when we start going through the budget, we're going to start also working on getting our bank reconciliation taken care of. And once we've got these fund balances in, just ready, we can actually start that.
Does the auditors, the auditors usually are a multi-month turnaround once they have the information, and you're talking about having audited statements out to us by the end of May?
I'm really trying to push them. Yes.
Do they have everything in, do they have all the information in hand at this point?
No, they do not. They're waiting for the trial balance, and they're waiting for us to. We can't create the schedules until we move fund balances over, because then they won't match the trial balance. So we can't even start until we get fund balances transferred over.
Fund balances transfer over.
Transfer.
Is the bank reconciliation, then you're able to send it over to the auditor.
Yes.
And then the auditor will get back to us, hopefully not, you know, less than three months.
Yes.
And then we'll get that back, and then we'll have that one last little piece before it gets brought up to the council.
Yeah. But aside from that, too, we're going to do bank reconciliations not only to 23, 24, but also continue it all the way through the rest of this year.
Oh, sure.
So that way, we will start to see where we're at on our fund balances and start scrubbing the numbers as we go on. The idea is to catch up, not necessarily to stay in arrears. So.
We have to adopt a budget by the end of June.
We do. Well, end of May, I believe, we have to have it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jerry?
So on that note, do you see us having to do one of those extensions of the budget?
I hope not. I mean, really, we're only pushing forward.
All right. On the audit, on page 12, and I don't think, do you have it in front of you? There's a graphic that shows management discussion analysis, business type activity. I'm just curious if it's supposed to say June 30th, 2023, and then June 30th, 2023, or did it need to say 2022 and 23? I just wasn't sure if I was reading that wrong. It just seemed kind of a weird, some of the same information's there, just different numbers and same.
The ones the revenues, the others expenses.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure that it was supposed to reflect that way or not.
Yeah.
Okay. And then regarding PERS, the hit to PERS comes to all the cities at the same time at the same amount, or is it different for each city?
Different for each city, because the actuarial is taking into account everybody, the package of everybody.
And are we on target for this year to for those to bump up, or were we hit two years ago?
I'm thinking no. I'm thinking that we've.
I know that they still hit us every year with.
They still hit us with a small increase.
Yeah, but we're not.
I'm not expecting a large increase that was that year.
Okay, that was the other question I had. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on discussion of the audit for 22, 23 for the city of Willets?
John Hascheck, Third District Supervisor. And we just got information today from HDL, which does the analysis for the county and for a lot of counties throughout the state about the sales tax revenue and how it's coming in. And so it just came in today, and for the fourth quarter of 2024, which was from October to December, that the for the county unincorporated areas, it was down 8.7%. For the county overall, which includes the cities of Willets, Ukiah, Fort Bragg, it was Point Arena, too. It was down 5.4%. And in the state, it was down just 1.1%. So shows kind of trend what we're seeing on the ground.
Right.
Suprema Redrigas. The general fund balance was positive. I just wanted to point out that it was positive in 2023 despite the fact that we were still honoring the commitments that we had made for Measure K. So I just didn't want us to lose sight of the fact that when we passed Measure K, we told the citizens of this community that we were going to do X, Y, and Z, that we were going to increase the police force, we would increase parks, and we were going to take care of roads. And we did allocate a lot of funds to ensure that that happened. And yet we still had a fund balance without using a dime of the Measure K at the end of 2023. And the Measure K committee was extremely conservative and concerned about making sure that any funds that were allocated in the next year, which we'll see in the next budget, that none of those were reoccurring funds. If you go back and you look at the minutes of the meetings of Measure K, you'll see that everything on there was a one-time allocation. And then I did hear a mention of the $800,000. And that $800,000 actually hadn't been fully fleshed out and discussed, so I can't really speak to how much we're moving. But there was an understanding that there was something that was going to need to be moved from the Measure K fund in that in that fiscal year over in order to continue to make sure that we were meeting our obligations to the public of what we told them that Measure K would do. And Measure K still has a very healthy fund. We could have moved over quite a bit more sooner to meet our obligations to the public. So I just wanted to point that out. And we also knew, as a business owner, we can see the decline in sales. And often, our local decline is varies from what we see at the state level. So I know those of us in business who we've seen sometimes, you know, a 30% drop. Well, state may only say that statewide, they see like a 10% drop. So it can really vary in our communities compared to statewide. So just keeping that in mind as well. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, so.
Can I back up and ask one more question?
Sure.
And it maybe has to do with the rail to trail project. And this has been awarded, it's like a $3.9 million project or something. Is that?
I think it's.
No, it's close to $10 million.
Yeah.
Some somewhere in the in the last 30 days, somebody told me that that was underfunded by a million dollars, and that the city was going to have to come up with a million dollars to get that project. Or is that true?
I was recently told that there's a little bit of underfunding, but it wasn't.
That's underfunding enough for the project itself, this project management, but we're making corrections to that.
Yeah.
Bits came in higher, but we're not underfunded on the project now. We're fully funded on the project.
And Bruce, I was told that some of the environmental work at the beginning of this, we've already paid for, and it's already taken care of, and that's part of our obligation to them. So it's already worked, it's been done, it's been paid for.
Okay.
Okay, so this isn't an action item? This is just presentation?
Yes.
No more public comment? Is there? All right, moving on. So our next item, I'm going to ask Walter to combine.
Yeah.
B and C, so we can combine the caterpillar and the tractor in one conversation.
All right. This is for the purchase and replacement of two pieces of equipment that the city has. The city of Willets has a long history of using its equipment and vehicles to their fullest. And I know you understand that with our trucks and things. So we get a lot of use out of the vehicles, and this is, these are both critical pieces of equipment that are very old, high hours, and are requiring more and more maintenance. We have funding in place from sewer, wastewater enterprise, and city infrastructure capital projects fund 400. It gets split between all departments because it gets used between all departments. Both are a critical piece of backhoe and a mower that is held together more with Willets than anything else. So they're well needed, and we've amortized over the years. Both pieces are in excess of. Both pieces are in excess of 20 years old, so they're both, I think, well-required, needed pieces of equipment.
Okay, this is an action item. Any questions from the council?
Well, I think we should do them separately, though.
Oh, okay, if you wanna do them separately, that's fine.
Oh, either way.
Okay.
I admire the mower.
The Heston, the old one or the new one we're gonna get?
I don't know, the old one.
It's been chugging along.
That thing is classic. It made, Roots might be interested.
What'll happen to it, it'll get transferred up to the airport, get used maybe once or twice a year, but that's about all it can do. Yeah, for every moment.
Except for rest.
But thank you, we'll donate it to Roots after.
I'll have it.
Any questions about tractor or the mower?
I just had, I talked to Walter before that we did, even though we didn't put them out to bid, we did use Sourcewell.
We used Sourcewell as government, it's a government.
Purchasing.
Purchasing program and stuff that gives reduced rates to government cities and things like that. It's a set price, and we utilize that to get best price available. Yes.
But it is still being bought from Peterson?
Yes, but they, they, they work through Sourcewell, yes.
In Garden?
In Garden, yes, yes.
I make a motion to.
Oh, wait, we have that public comment?
Well, I'm still making a motion.
Okay.
Do a motion in a second.
Okay, motion in a second, is there a second?
Yeah, it's a second. Well, but we're making a motion separately, right?
I think we should, because we have.
So do a comment. Make a motion for Caterpillar backhoe.
Okay, Caterpillar backhoe. Any public comment on the Caterpillar backhoe? Okay, even though we have a Caterpillar still in the backhoe. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Alanese.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Okay. Is there any more discussion on the mower or the Kubota?
I had a question I wanted to ask on that.
Oh.
Is this exclusively for use of the wastewater treatment plant?
The mower?
Yes.
Yes.
I just was curious whether Brooktrails Township has been advised about the necessity for this or prior to this meeting.
Hmm, no, we haven't had our meeting with them, no, they have not been advised. It's part of, I don't know that that would fall within what they would be paying for. It's wastewater operations, this is, this is for operationally of maintaining the land there and the spray fields and mowing all of that. We'll have to look into that. That's a good question. Okay.
Okay, we have public comment on this one?
No.
Brooktrails manager.
Tamara Alanese, 145 Tuttle, and the Brooktrails General Manager. I would agree with Walter that that's an O and M, and Brooktrails pays a monthly O and M as well as a portion of the capital replacement costs and a portion of the debt service for the wastewater. So in this particular case, I wasn't here to comment on this item because I did see it as O and M, but I appreciate the question and the perspective as we move forward to be working on our second amendment to the settlement agreement. Thank you.
Right on. Is there any other public comment on the Kubota mower tractor?
So I appreciate you bringing up that question. I'm interpreting that Brooktrails is interpreting the answer to this is that they have no financial obligation for a third of the capital expenditure on this. I'm hoping everybody, am I getting that right?
Yeah, and that was my belief, but I'm gonna look into it, but I believe it's just operations and maintenance, and that that would not fall under the 30-some odd percent that they usually pay for, correct?
So plant, plant equipment that becomes obsolete or worn out or broken, I don't know that a mower really is, would fit that description. On, on the replacement of obsolete, broken equipment, they have, Brooktrails pays a share of the cost to replace that equipment. Question whether a mower falls within that definition or not.
Because none of our rolling stock, they pay, they don't pay for our trucks or anything else like that, or any other mobile equipment. It's usually fixed assets.
That's a good analogy.
Do they pay us to repair their sewer lines? The joint sewer line? Do they pay their share?
What do you mean, joint sewer line? I mean.
Well, from Mill Creek to the sewer plant is jointly.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a repair on that, I, yes, probably. Yeah, we'd have, I'd have to look at that individually and stuff and everything, yeah.
I don't recall any obligations.
I know.
I don't recall any obligation for that, that section of, by, once it enters the.
I know, we haven't had anything happen.
Basically, it's metered, it becomes the city's responsibility, is my, my best recollection. And also, it's more associated with which fund is paying for the, the equipment rather than, I think, than operations. It's a complex discussion.
It is.
So we're gonna put this tractor on hold?
No. I think, given the time of the year and, I would certainly have a slightly different perspective on this, I guess, but, but I do recognize that there is a need. Fire season is here and the grass is growing.
Yeah, we've been waiting for this actually for the last year and a half, but there's been, been some delays in it, so, yes.
I would not, I'm not, I'm not supporting that delay.
Okay. Okay, any more public comment? We have a motion in a second, let's see the vote, please.
We have a motion?
We did not have.
Do we have a motion for the?
I thought I made a motion.
Okay, sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm a second, sorry.
Gonzalez, second. Okay, Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Alanese.
Aye.
Mayor Alman.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item is discussion and possible action on requesting a public convenience and necessity PCN determination for a Type 20 license for beer and wine for the upcoming Hollis Market located at 1569 South Main Street. Presenting staff member is Connor Stack.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I'm here today to present to PCN, but we're starting today with Hollis. ABC has, and Hollis have both reached out to discuss the need for a PCN, public convenience and necessity request. Basically, this is built around the fact that Mendocino County in general is oversaturated in terms of alcohol licenses, but locally here in our census tract of Willets, we are not oversaturated. If it was oversaturated, they wouldn't have even let this occur. But because the county in general has an oversaturation, the ABC office has requested that the council, or is basically the Council on Planning Commission for each region, to put forward a PCN. This request basically supporting businesses that are serving alcohol in areas with this Hollis Market is going to be in South Willets at 1569 South Main Street. I'm just gonna read it off here. The Hollis Market intends to offer a full range of beer and wine products sold individually in six packs and full cases. They believe that it's of significant convenience to their customers, providing a one-stop shop for barbecue supplies and beverages. And again, this is a request put together by both Hollis Market and the ABC offices.
So I have a question, because the item following this is a Type 20 beer and wine license also.
That is correct. So there are two businesses that are opening up that are requesting very similar, very similar things, where they both are offering services, whether they're gonna sell beer and wine, on location that then to be served off of location independently.
And ABC's request to you was equal for both of them?
Yes, it was.
Everything was the same?
Everything was the same. The reason that they're coming together, just to give some clarification, is I had some questions and details with the original one discussing why this was occurring with ABC, and when they gave the detail about memorandum and census tracts, then I was ready to move forward with Hollis, who applied slightly beforehand. And by then, at about that time period when I gained clarification, Willets Discount Market also came forward asking for the same thing.
Okay.
So that's why they're both brought together.
It's a good idea. All right.
The Hollis Market's in the old, back, the old star super building?
Yeah.
Is that where, right?
Yes, 15.
And so, I'd like to know the date that they made their application.
Um, I do not have that on me right now. I believe, I have it in my records upstairs, but, um, their, so their application was made to ABC, and then they go through that process, and then ABC's basically, when they're about to receive a license, instead tells Hollis, please request from the city this PCN request. And then they talk with us to have that discussion. They need to give us a formal letter, basically asking for support from the city, after which I've sort of reached out to ABC, looking sort of what this was, why they're required to do in this place. I believe that this entire process started with the letter given. I believe I attached the letter, attached the date, the sent. I believe I did, I apologize. I believe it was in.
Do we have anybody from the market here that?
Yes.
Yes, I believe some better dates can get.
My name is Maria Fierro, and, yeah, I think this application has started more than a year and a half ago.
You come over here, just.
Could you say your name again slower, please?
Maria Fierro. And, yeah, I'm trying to open up this Hollis Market. This whole process started almost two years ago, and the ABC license, I think, maybe a year and a half ago? I don't have the exact date, but I can get it for you guys.
I'm just curious, that's embarrassing, likely long time, in my opinion. Is that held up a year?
It was just for, no, 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 not the ABC, it was just personal problems that we were like, are we gonna do it, are we not gonna do it? And, you know, I took a long time to get them the information papers they were requesting. And when I had first, they changed the person that was working on the ABC license, the first lady, her name Elizabeth Castro, was assuming that we did not need this letter, convenience letter, and, you know, I never started the process with the city council for this letter. But then when this transferred over to Tracy Nielsen, he said, yeah, that we do need it.
Well, I apologize on the behalf of the community that, that took a year and a half to get clarity on something that should.
But no, I'm not blaming it on them, it was just me that we slowed. We had, I think, completely stopped the process for a year. We were not sure whether or not to do it or not. But, yeah, we are ready. I own Taqueria Maria since 2018, and as many as you know, before that, it was Hollis Market. It's always been like a taqueria and marketplace. So we wanna just expand, you know, we wanna make it a little bigger. We wanna actually have a market for Willets, because there's no Mexican market, and just exhibit our products, the meat, the produce and everything, just expand it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, you have a question, or sir?
I believe.
I have one on the second one, the Willets.
Okay, we haven't got that one yet.
Yes.
Just to give some clarity, the official letter that they gave to us to move this forward was given at the end of March, so I believe March 27. So this was, me being unsure, it's like sometime between the end of February when we started figuring stuff out, to April, so sometime in the last two, three months, trying to figure it out with ABC, not a, hasn't been in our hands yet.
For government, that's lightning speed.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Jerry?
Connor, I guess I support this to the applicants and to you, I would support this. The only question I have is, and I don't know if it's an ABC thing or not, but would the applicants be required to post signs about non-consumption on the premises? I've noticed some of the other businesses have, in town, they have, do no consumption on, you know, basically on the premises.
They would need to follow any other regular state guidelines.
So.
That are available, which is through ABC, I believe.
So that's the only thing I would like to see, just so that folks, you can buy your beer or wine, but don't drink it there.
All right, any public comment on Hollis Market? Beer and wine Type 20? No public comment?
We have a motion to find that a public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of a requested license and direct staff to submit a letter of public convenience of necessity to ABC on behalf of the council.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Alanese.
Aye.
Mayor Alman.
Aye. All right, good, part two.
Part two. Very similar, this is for 851 South Main Street, with the discussion, possible action, requesting a public convenience and necessity PCN determination for the upcoming Willets Discount Market. The, they will operate a discount market, a convenience store offering soft drinks, candy, ice, lot of snacks, and local Mendocino beer and wine. And they have, again, this same process with ABC, where they have gone through this process, and ABC at the end of this process has asked for a PCN from the City of Willets.
Where is this?
The old Rex, the old Hallmark store next to Safely.
Okay.
I went, I had a heck of a time finding this place, and the only thing that gets it is there's a sticker on the door that says that this is the Willets Discount Market at 851 South Main Street. There isn't anything in the building, absolutely nothing. And no, if it wasn't for the sign, you would not even know it was there. And I looked inside it the best I could, and I went, in fact, I went up today to find and find out if we issue permits for something that is not anything, anything there. And I was told that, yeah, that we do.
Well, you're not supposed to do anything until you get a permit. There's no compliance.
That's not what the other people did.
So how about if we have the owner of the market explain what it is? Is that okay with you? Larry?
What?
The owner of the market's here.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Latif Blasimourzey. I'm the owner of the 851 Main Street, which is gonna be mini-market and convenience store. So any question here, I'm open to answer.
So we notice there's nothing in the building right now.
Yeah, the building, you know, we didn't, we can, you know, we're just waiting, you know, for the building permit to, they're gonna give us the permit to, if you could remove the wall and make it extended. So when you apply with the ABC Type 20, they give you the permit, you have to post it for 30 days or over there for the public, if they have any concern. So, so we just.
They're hoping to get the permit done first, their 30 days will be notified, and then while that's going on, you'll have to do.
And already applied two months ago for the seller permit and the city, which is the corner right now, so just waiting for today for the PCN.
Thank you.
So it was a 60-day turnaround from the.
It's a 30 days, 30 to 60 days, yeah.
You applied 30 days ago?
Ah, yeah.
Well, just a lot.
So don't tell us any secrets, but when do you expect to be open?
Well, we're just waiting, you know, for today, you know, to be approved of it. So we just start opening, and it might take several months, because the ABC just waiting for approval.
All right.
For the, which is the zoning already approved, it's not a working center, so it's just your decision.
All right, good luck and welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any public comment on 851 South Main, Willets Discount Market, Type 20 ABC? None, all right. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that you find that a PCN would serve by the issuance of the requested license and direct staff to submit a letter of PCN to ABC on behalf of the council.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Deja vu. Okay.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
No.
Alanese.
Aye.
Deja vu, okay.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
No.
Almane.
Aye.
Almane. And Mayor Almond.
Aye.
I would just like to thank both of you for investing in the community. And if you run into any roadblocks with the city and getting your permits and getting up and running, please let us know because our intent is to make that process as seamless as possible.
And anybody else who's watching the television who wants to open a business in Willets, we'd like to work with you. All right, doors.
There are no department monthly reports.
Wait, 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 we don't know yet. Is there an airport report?
There's one in the packet, yeah.
There is one in the... Sorry.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
Community development?
Yeah, thank you Mayor Almond. Welcome, City Manager Wilburn. I'll be curious, Adrian Moore was our former city manager when I got here. And one of the reasons I wanted to take the job in part was, was the opportunity to work with Rod there. And I remember Adrian letting you know that, you know, don't be surprised if you're city manager one day, so I wonder if you've had a chance of a letter?
That could be in person.
So, just, just one thing to add on to the report there. Many of our community members may have noticed that there's some work being done on the Van Hotel. And that's in response to a notice in order to repair substandard building in a beta public nuisance that was provided to the owner some time back. And part of that was repair, replace all deteriorated, ineffective waterproofing of exterior walls, roofs, et cetera. So with the paint there graying or checked, essentially flaking, it's losing its waterproof ability there. And so that's them responding to one of unfortunately many deficiencies with that building. So while we're certainly glad to see some action there, we're gonna be looking for much more from the owner and are in the process of seeking a receivership for that property just because of the longstanding issues that have arisen there. But certainly kudos to the owner for, you know, the work that is being done at this time, so, you know, wanted to make note of that. And then received concerns, you know, about, obviously it's a little bit alarming for the, the paint is there, pressure washing it to come down on the sidewalk, and there's concerns that it can get in the drain and then into the creeks. The contractor is required to clean up, clean up that every day when they're done, and we are taking the time to make sure they're doing a decent job of that, so I just wanted to point that out.
As a local painter, too.
Full spectrum, I believe, is who's doing that, yeah.
I have a question. Did they do anything with the roof?
Yeah, so the applicant is seeking a permit to complete a new roof. What's missing from that being a full application is they need to complete the asbestos survey. There's probably been something like four layers of re-roofing that's been put on there going maybe back to the 60s. And there's a chance that there may be some asbestos within the old roofing material. And it may also impact some of the interior roofing. So our department's working closely with air quality to ensure that we obtain asbestos survey before issuing that permit. But yes, they are seeking a new roof for that building too, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't do any public comment on the airport, is there any public comment on airport? Any public comment on community development? Any more? Okay, so finance, I know you've given a report.
I have one question to, does Nick still own that building?
Yes. Nick, the, the Van Hotel?
Or has he passed on?
Is Nick the, Nick was the old, I believe he has passed on. Currently, it's in the mother's name. It's actually transferred ownership a few times recently. Yeah.
Strategically. Okay, police, I'm sorry, finance, was there anything more, Manny?
No, there's none.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I did submit a police activity report, it's pretty straightforward, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But the reason I'm up here is for something different, I wanted to make a, an important announcement on behalf of this department. Is there any questions on the police activity report before we start?
No.
Okay. So at strategic planning, council will recall that I spoke about the high-low sirens and how they're used for evacuations elsewhere. We haven't been doing the high-low siren drill in Willetts, we're gonna start that. And so here's, here's the plan so far. So we are gonna do a high-low siren evacuation drill on May 28 at 3:30 PM. And so what I'm, I want to read you something that's gonna go out in our water bill to everyone. So obviously...
Not the water bill.
Whatever it's called.
Well, that created some issues last time.
Yes, it did.
It's not made now.
I don't get your point. So, so obviously, we're not just gonna do a high-low drill without public awareness campaign, right? So I'm gonna read what's going out in the water bill. So I'm just gonna read it verbatim, so just bear with it. As season, as fire season is upon us, we at the City of Willetts Police Department want to ensure that all residents are aware of the high-low sirens distinct sound. Willetts Police Patrol Cars are equipped with high-low sirens, which will only be activated in emergencies that require an immediate evacuation. So remember this, when you hear the high-low, it's time to go. That's our campaign. On Wednesday, May 28 at 3:30 PM, our police department will conduct a high-low siren emergency evacuation drill and patrol cars driving our city streets with the sirens activated. Do not evacuate as this is only a drill. The drill will end by 3:40 PM, so it'll be about 10 minutes. Please do not call 911 unless you have an emergency or a police, or do not call police dispatch during drill, we ask of that. In the event of a real high-low siren evacuation, you will receive a NICSIL alert of where the danger is and directions of travel to evacuate. To receive Willetts Police NICSIL alerts, text your zip, text your zip code to 888-777 or sign up online at nixil.com. Additionally, we suggest you go to mendoready.org and sign up for countywide emergency alerts. So on this public awareness campaign, so the fire chief is aware and the fire chief very happy, and then he is in fact gonna put that on his message board prior to the drill, like a week ahead of time. The sheriff's office is aware that we're doing this as well, this high-low drill. We're gonna be sending out NICSIL notifications, there's gonna be a social media campaign warning people. Of course, we'll contact the media. And we're just trying to get the word out as best we can, again, so we don't surprise anyone when we do the evacuation drill. Willetts should do this annually to get people used to the evacuation siren noise. And so that's the plan. And council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Good job.
I just want to say thank you. The school district has already notified everybody, all the employees, one of the biggest employees in the area here. So we've been informed early and they're gonna keep reminding us, so thank you for letting the community know about this important work, it's great.
Thank you.
I think it's gonna be equally instructive about how effective public outreach is, because you're certainly gonna get a hold of them with the sound. Whether you get a hold of them beforehand or not. I'll be just curious.
Yeah. And it's a two-pronged approach, so one is conditioned people to understand that noise, and the other is to get you to sign up for NICSIL alerts and get you to sign up for Mendoready.
You know, it was, it was...
So you can receive these emergency evacuation notices, yeah.
It was until the mid 90s, somewhere right around there, there was a siren that went off at noon every day.
That's the fire department.
The heroes. Chief, this is on May 28.
Yes.
This is a Wednesday, 3:30 PM, school has just got out. Was that part of your thought process?
Not really, so part of the thought process is, I'm here that day. It's near our shift change, we're all, it won't cost us overtime, it was the most officers that I had, and I wanted to be part of it too. I don't have two dispatchers on that day, because our dispatch center, even though we do this public work, it's gonna get blown out.
That school bus bar needs to be told about this as soon as possible, just, I mean, that's...
Well, the school district is, as Vice Mayor.
We heard of it, 28?
Absolutely.
Okay. We already notified them. But one will take it.
You might ask the school to do one of their robo-calls the night before so that their kids know that. They're pretty good about sending those out, and that way at least all the school kids' parents hear it.
A good thought, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else, chief?
That's all I got.
Any public comment for the chief? Oh, Mickey.
What about your, your license plate reader deal?
Oh, well, that's gonna take, well, I appreciate council's approval on that, and it's gonna take some time for that. I would say, I'm gonna guess July it will be implemented. And Caltrans is part of that conundrum, too, is...
Mickey, you have a...
For bottle?
I wonder, can we use the traffic sign that...
Those are gonna be used, both of them at the north and south end of town, yeah.
Because still to this day, not everybody goes on Facebook.
Right, I get it.
I want to add, I want to add that we are running that notice in the paper as well each week before the event.
Between?
I posted it on the website and Kathy will be following up on the Facebook.
All right, any more public comment on law enforcement? Okay, let's go to service and facilities, Walter, anything else?
Nope, I just want to commend the crews, they've been working hard. We had an unusual situation at the rail, with trail project, they masticated a large section there where we have a sewer line. When we were inspecting the sewer line, the crew discovered that one of the very deep manholes was being occupied by homeless. And it was clogged up, and the crew did a great job. It took almost a dump truck and a half load of things out of a manhole that they had built, railroad ties on the inside and made layers with beds and everything else, bicycles. So the crew did a great job, it was not an easy job to get everything out of there and being in a confined space and operating under that, so I have to commend everyone for that. And we're putting locking devices on the manholes.
Congratulations on having a good team.
Well, yeah, it was, it was phenomenal, yeah.
And public comment on service facilities? So utilities, anything on utilities?
Nothing other than what's there, unless you have any questions.
Public comment on utilities? All right, we're getting to the end here, folks, city council announcements, communications and reports. Jerry?
Larry and I attended the Water, Wastewater Systems Committee meeting, and the big thing is that now we're gonna be meeting quarterly unless something happens, and the next meeting is July?
July, do you have the dates?
I don't have the date for me, but in July.
All right, so if we can make sure that makes it on the website, then for interested parties. And then, basically, we talked about the camera truck upgrades, computer upgrades, quarterly, let's see, the quarterly meeting discussion happened. I should have asked the skunk train guy, but apparently we're still trying to wrestle with the skunk train about an agreement...
On the trestle, on the line replacement?
Maybe that might be a segue, call him up and say, hey, we're very interested in partnering, because you know, you know, I totally agree, we need to partner with them, but maybe...
We're working with them right now to get that MOU signed.
You know, and then we got updates on some of the leaks that happen, leaks and repairs, and the, I think that's basically it, and just some updates on some stuff that's happening, so. Anything else, Walter, that you think?
Yeah, that covered it.
And that's it. And then we do have a transportation meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock here?
No, was it 10 o'clock or 3:30?
3:30.
Oh, 3:30. 3:30, that's 3:30, 3:30, okay.
Thing on the railroad, I don't understand why the railroad doesn't want to do it, what we asked...
It's very easy to do for signature, we're actually just there to trust them today. It's in very poor condition, and they claim that they can't do repairs until we fix the pipe, but they're not signing the agreement so we can fix that water line. So, yeah, they're pushing ahead, they're going higher up and everything right now, and we'll be writing Mr. Phil only another letter and seeing where we can get with it. It should be a simple process, it's not right now.
Okay, any other city council announcements, communications or reports?
Just wanted to share with everybody that the finance committee did have a chance to meet last week on April 16. We heard from our financial director, many of the stuff that he shared with today about the audit report and the timeline for not only switching over from ACS to Springburg, but also as far as the auditing for the next couple of years is concerned. It's optimistic, obviously, but it's, it's good to see that we're getting closer and closer to being where we should be. And then, thank you for, Mr. Roscoe for working on that. But the finance committee will meet again here on May the 21st, and we meet at 3:30, and everybody is welcome.
May what was that?
May 21st. Anybody else? All right, good and welfare, I think we've covered it. Is there anything else? No, closed session.
I'll move to adjourn.
It's adjourned. Thank you for being here, folks.
Adjourned at 8:17.